Gopi, thank you.
Yeah, so before we go into the Adi Sachetana Aarti that we had an intro for last week, I just wanted to show you all the PDF document of the Gujarati Aarti which I have done with inputs that we gathered in the last couple of sessions. So if you're able to see my Gujarati Aarti document, is it visible to all?
We're seeing Adi Sachetana.
Oh, okay, okay, let me share this, I think it's sharing only. Okay, you should be able to see it now, the Gujarati Aarti, okay. So this is the plain transliteration and the meaning that we discussed a couple of sessions ago. And then I have one version which is with the syllables. And also wherever we have a break in pronouncing a word or a pause or a longer sound, I have indicated that with these two dots. Example, ek kud ratne pharma tu. So there is a pause after a kud, right? And so that's indicated with these two dots. And wherever we have a sound that ends with a, I have added a within parenthesis. Bujha bhi nar. So this is actually nar, but it is pronounced nar. So, but it's not nara. So that sound is indicated with a a within parenthesis. So this is one version. Hope this is clear, is this good enough?
Excellent.
Okay. And the third version I have is what Mikal was saying. This is the word by word meaning of the Aarti. So we have the meaning of the word next to the Gujarati word. So this is the version that I was talking about. So these three versions are there and I know that this may not be appropriate for publishing, but since this is only for learning, I think we should be good. I was talking to Ward Paks last week. So he was saying that the standard convention of writing sadh kee, for example, is S A D K E, but we are writing K A Y, which is fine, which is another way of doing it. But I think we all discussed that this way it will be easier to learn, that you don't have to pronounce or you won't pronounce it like sadh ki, but it is sadh kee. So if we all agree, I would leave it like this for the learning purpose, that wherever we have a sound called ya, it will be Y A Y. And sadh kee is K A Y and so on.
Yeah, that's helpful for English speakers as well, just because we're used to seeing it that way, so.
Yeah. So this is the one that is there in the Google Drive and you all can access it. And we will, any questions or any inputs on the Gujarati Aarti before we go to Adi Sachetana?
Thank you so much because this looks like it was a lot of work and a lot of time and I certainly appreciate it, really. I mean, it's beautiful. And to give the three versions is especially appreciated.
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you, Jai Baba.
Yeah, I agree, fantastic work, thank you so much.
You're welcome. So let me share the Adi Sachetana Aarti now. Hope you are able to see the Hindi Aarti, huh?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a presentation that was made by our group a few months ago. This was for explaining the Arthis for Telugu speaking people, Baba lovers in Andhra. So this was made and I made some changes so that I have removed the Telugu content and made it more relevant to this audience. So this is Baba's Adi Sachetana Aarti. And we have given some background on how the Aarti came up and the meaning and the pronunciation of the words. So I will not go into detail into each of these slides because most of us know, right, how the Aarti came up and who wrote. Bhauji wrote this and but there are details as to when it was written and what rag it was composed on and what Baba had said about that. So maybe if you are fine, I'll just go into those slides which are important or and this will be also shared in the Google Drive, so you all can refer to it at any time. So we all know that Baba had asked Bhauji to write this Aarti. It was written in nineteen sixty-seven. And during the stay in Guru Prasad, Baba had the Aarti read and explained its meaning. He stated that this is a universal Aarti, this Aarti is very important. It has come from my heart. When it is sung, it will penetrate each one's heart. Even a stone will benefit when it hears this Aarti. Baba revealed each line of this Aarti has two or three words from me. Then Sheila Kalturi asked about it. Baba held her wrist and guided her hand to underline the words he had dictated in a notebook when the Aarti was written. So. And. Okay, so this Aarti was the melody for the Aarti was composed by Manik Hatidharu, who was the son of Rustum Kaka Hatidharu, an old time Baba lover who was in Baba's fold from nineteen thirty-three onwards. Manik, you know, who was very young, you know, he when Baba had asked him to compose a melody for this Aarti. There's a story that Manik came to meet Baba along with his father in October nineteen sixty-eight. Baba tells Manik to set music for the Aarti written by Bhau instead of asking Rustum Kaka, who was more accomplished as a singer and as a musician. Manik followed Baba's order and set the music in rag bhairvi. He sang the Aarti before Baba on his next visit to Mehera Sad. Baba did not like the music and said, "Put a better melody to it and bring it tomorrow, I will help you." This is Rustum Kaka that we see here playing the harmonium. And we see Manik as a young boy with the arrow shown here. So then Manik said, "Baba, all the previous Arthis, like those composed by Shahane, Madhusudan, etc., were in rag bhairvi. This raga is sung at the end of a musical concert." Then Baba says, "Do not argue with me." Baba admonished Manik, "Do as I tell you to do." Manik prepared tunes in six or seven different ragas and played them to Baba. Baba was not satisfied with any of his tunes. This went on for several days. Baba asks Manik to set the music to the. Okay. Then one afternoon in Mehera Sad, Baba said to Manik, "Now I am giving you a last chance. If you do not satisfy me tomorrow, put all your musical instruments in a box, nail it and throw it in the Sina River in Ahmednagar." So it was that serious. And that whole night, Manik was very anxious and miserable. Rustum Kaka also refused help as it was Baba's instruction for Manik to compose a melody. Manik was very sad and did not know what to do. He placed the tabla, violin, dilruba, harmonium and all other instruments in front of him in a semicircle, looked at them and prayed for inspiration. But no inspiration came through. He could not sleep all night. And then when he dozed off around four AM, Manik felt someone shaking him up. He started hearing divine melodious, indescribably sweet sounds and the notes. He heard them and wrote the notation hurriedly. He woke up his father and sang the composition. It was set in rag tilakamod. "It sounds good," Rustum Kaka said. In the next morning at seven AM, Manik starts on his bicycle to Mehera Sad. Aloba meets him near the kindh or the entrance of before the gate and tells him that Baba arrived at seven thirty AM instead of eight AM and informs that Baba has been asking for Manik. Manik rushes to the Mandali Hall and sings the Aarti in front of Baba. Baba heard Manik sing and remarked, "Very good, I am very happy. How did you compose it?" Manik narrated to him the entire story on hearing which Baba said, "Did I not tell you that I'll help you?" During those days Baba was very ill. He said, "Do not sing this Aarti now, sing it when I drop my body." So this was in October nineteen sixty-eight. Baba mentioned the new Hindi Aarti to Mehera. Bhau wrote a truly fine Aarti which includes few certain words from me. Baba then asked Sheila to read it to Mehera and explained the meaning of each line. Mehera kissed Baba and agreed, "Baba, this is a very good Aarti." Baba said, "I am so happy you like it, that's why I brought it here for you. When I first heard it in the hall, my first thought was that Mehera must hear it. So I told Sheila to read it for you." So that's the story of how the Aarti came. It is so wonderful. And there is an audio file of Pratap Ahir singing this Aarti here. And just for your reference, there is this Aarti in the Devanagari script. So. Any questions or any thoughts, inputs so far?
Gopi, were you gonna play the Aarti?
Should we play the Aarti or we would go into the pronunciation? And then probably we can at the end play the Aarti, whatever you all like.
Yes, yes, up to you.
Okay. Okay, so this is as we know, this is Bhau's Aarti to Baba. And the English translation that is there is by Adi Kherani. And the music of course is by Manik Hatidharu. So this this couplet that is there, which is sung usually, I mean, it is not sung at the samadhi. At the samadhi, we all sing straight from Adi Sachetana. But this is the couplet that is there before and so I have included that. And it is sung at other times, like at Amrititi, this is sung. And we all sing it when we sing Aarti at the Baba centers and other meetings. So I'll start reading this. And wherever you have any question, please stop so that and if we need to correct anything or anything is not clear, we can stop there. Hua lehr se hi hai jiski sristi ka nirman. Hua lehr se hi hai jiski sristi ka nirman. Uski davi anantta ka uski davi anantta ka kaise ho anuman. Hua lehr se hi hai jiski sristi ka nirman. Uski davi anantta ka kaise ho anuman. O the one from whose whim sprang up the universe, how can intellect fathom his divinity? Adi sachetan shanti niketan. Adi sachetan shanti niketan. Namo brahm aao Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. O primordial life-giving consciousness, my salutations to you, O Brahma, come. Lord Meher, accept my Aarti. Prem deep main hiye jalau. Prem deep main hiye jalau. Wherever we have a nasal sound for it is indicated with N, with the dot on top of it. Jalau. Pavu. And so on. Prem deep main hiye jalau. Nirvad andhera mitta pavu. Nirvad andhera mitta pavu. Apna sab kuch tumhe chadhau. Apna sab kuch tumhe chadhau. Tum mujhko sar saao. Tum mujhko sar saao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. May I light the lamp of love in my heart and find the deep darkness annihilated. I offer you everything that belongs to me, except me. Lord Meher, accept my Aarti. This, the third verse. Jeevan ki har saans again, there's a nasal sound here. Jeevan ki har saans hamari ban jaye prabhu gati tumhari. Jeevan ki har saans hamari ban jaye prabhu gati tumhari. He karuna kar leela dhari. He karuna kar. There is a hard sound for N here, so that's indicated with a dot below the letter. He karuna, it is not na, but na. He karuna kar leela dhari. Tum karuna barsao. Tum karuna barsao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. May every breath of our life, oh Lord, become your pleasure. O compassionate one, master of the divine game, shower your mercy upon me. Lord Meher, accept my Aarti. The last verse. Banay Aarti Jeevan Mera Banay Aarti Jeevan Mera Adi antka laya ho ghera Adi antka laya ho ghera Khule nayan aur dikhay sवेरा Khule nayan aur dikhay sवेरा Tum mujhme cha jaao Tum mujhme cha jaao Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. May my Aarti become my very life. Here I wanted to add my opinion or thought. While I did not change the translation from the one that was done by Adi Kherani or the one that is published as done by Adi Kherani. What this line means is, banay Aarti Jeevan Mera is actually may my very life become the Aarti. So Aarti is not giving, you know, it's not a ritual that we give with, you know, as it is done in the east, that there is a fire lit and it is shown to God with camphor burnt. So they burn camphor and that fire is shown to the deity. And that's what is done as a ritual when the Aarti is done in any temple. But what the Aarti, the actual or the real Aarti is to offer our avazas or our imperfections and and our very existence. So, banay Aarti Jeevan Mera. May my very life become the Aarti, become my Aarti. But here it was, it is written, may my Aarti become my very life. So in a way, it gives the same sense, but I think the words are I think are jumbled, but just wanted to give my thought on this. May my Aarti become my very life, may the cycle of births and deaths be ended. May my eyes open and behold the dawn. And may your presence permeate through me. Lord Meher, accept my Aarti. So that's the pronunciation and the meaning of the Aarti. Any questions, any thoughts?
It's wonderful, Gopi. I would still love to see word-for-word translation of each of the words. If that is not too much trouble. I think, you know, for the people like me who are just fascinated by language and wanna kind of draw close to the heart the deep word and the meaning for each word. And I know in translation, you take some liberties to make it flow. But the real power is in the actual original words. So if, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, absolutely, I will, I'll be doing this. So I did until the second version where we have, you know, the I did not make a separate version for these syllables because wherever it was required, I just indicated here with parenthesis. Now I'll be making another version with word by word, word to word meaning, which I'll be doing and sending it in a day.
Great, thank you.
And these are the differences from which this information is and has been taken. So I will, I will share this with all so that you can or I will include the word-to-word translation as a different slide and then share it with all.
Right.
Do you want me to sing this Aarti?
Yes.
Okay. One second.
Can you put up the other slide, maybe the one that?
He's gonna sing it.
Which slide?
The one that had the words that I could understand.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. Avtar Meher Baba Ki Jai. Hua lehr se hi hai jiski sristi ka nirman. Uski davi anantta ka kaise ho anuman. Adi sachetan shanti niketan. Adi sachetan shanti niketan. Namo brahm aao Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Prem deep main hiye jalau. Prem deep main hiye jalau. Nirvad andhera mitta pavu. Nirvad andhera mitta pavu. Apna sab kuch tumhe chadhau. Apna sab kuch tumhe chadhau. Tum mujhko sar saao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Meher prabhu. Aarti apnaao. Jeevan ki har saans hamari. Jeevan ki har saans hamari. Ban jaye prabhu.
Ban jaye prabhu gati tumhari. Ban jaye prabhu gati tumhari. He karuna kar leela dhari. He karuna kar leela dhari. Tum karuna barasaavo. Meher prabhu aarti apnavo. Meher prabhu aarti apnavo. Baney aarti jeevan mera. Baney aarti jeevan mera. Adi antka laya ho ghera. Adi antka laya ho ghera. Khule nayan aur dikhay sवेरा. Khule nayan aur dikhay sवेरा. Tum mujhme chha jaao. Meher prabhu aarti apnavo. Meher prabhu aarti apnavo. Adi sachetan, shanti niketan. Adi sachetan, shanti niketan. Namo Brahma aao. Meher prabhu aarti apnavo. Meher prabhu aarti apnavo. Avtar Meher Baba ki jai.
So beautiful. And to know that Baba himself had a lot to do with this makes it all that much more significant. I had not heard that. Thank you.
Beautiful story. So, I noticed when you're singing Brahma, you, you put the H on the other side, you go brahmah.
It is actually namo Brahma, yeah. Na- namo, namo Brahma. Yeah, so it is, it is written in English as B-A-B-R-A-H-M-A. But yeah, so you, you can say either way, it doesn't make any difference. Brahma, it is brahmah.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, B-R-A-H-M-A is fine, brahmah. So what, what we have in the document is, is fine. So.
Yeah, I'm just curious about pronunciation because.
Yeah, right. Brahma, yeah. I'll just make it, let me make sure. Yeah, it is, it is written as brahmah, brahmah, yeah. So we can, we can pronounce brahmah. Namu Brahma aao. I would have, I would have sung with H after M, but yeah, we, we can, we can, we should sing, in fact, brahmah.
Is that a Sanskrit word or Hindi?
Brahma is, is, is a name of.
God.
Yeah, so it is one of the attributes of god, like, you know, who is the creator and Vishnu is the preserver and Shiva is the destroyer. So the three attributes of god, the first one is brahmah, yeah. So that's the name of the god.
In, in Hindi or is it Sanskrit?
I think this originates from Sanskrit and also used in Hindi and all the, all the Indian languages because it's a name.
Yeah.
Are there going to be regional differences in how you pronounce a word like that? I mean, it's, it's so old.
Yeah, I, I don't think there will be any difference. It is, it is just, you know, different people may have their, their own accents, but, but there should not be any difference in the way it should be pronounced.
I'm just curious about small things like that, you know, when you, how you use the H because we don't have that in English, right? So brahmah or brahmah, you know, the word H kind of fits is interesting to me.
Brahma is, is, is correct. So it should be H first and then M. Namu Brahma aao.
So then it's sort of a stylistic thing to sing it with a little bit more H.
Right, right.
Sing it so nobody knows what you're singing.
Brahma, yeah, right. Brahma is, is, is correct.
That's a beautiful photo in the background you have, Gopi. Where is that?
Yeah, this is the Manonash Cave, so it is very close to my apartment. It is walkable from my place where I live.
Yeah. And you, and you haven't lost your head yet?
I'm, I'm, I'm hoping for it.
That's inspiring.
Yeah, we all are.
Prakash has been zooming in from there. He comes in at the end of evening RT, our evening.
Oh, okay.
And he did a tour, so I recorded one, so.
I remember that, yeah.
Oh yeah, he showed us all around, so. So that's just there.
Gorgeous. Well, thank you, Gopi. As usual, you have obliged us.
Most welcome, most welcome, Farid.
You sing so beautifully, of course. So just that alone is so worthwhile.
And if that's all you are planning, maybe, I don't know if you are, but in closing, maybe we can listen to the version of.
Yeah, yes.
Now I can't remember his name. What?
Pratap, Pratap Ahir.
Pratap Ahir.
Yeah. Was it playing?
Maybe you can do it in a screen share again?
Yeah, and the computer sound because it's kind of.
Give me one second. I'll just do a screen share and then play the audio. Hopefully you'll, you'll be able to hear it.
Great. Now, just for future reference, I don't know, Gopi, when you played the video, if you chose play computer sound? It's a feature that comes up when you, after you do share screen, a screen comes up and you select things. That's where you select play computer sound.
It's at the bottom, share computer audio. Anyway, do you have the link to that?
Yes, yes. I, I will, I will send you the link to that, yeah.
To the whole presentation, which includes that?
Yes, I, yeah. I will be sharing the entire presentation on an email to you, Angela, and then you can, or I'll upload it into the Google Drive that you have shared with me. And, and I will also include the, it's a YouTube link that I played. The aarti is on YouTube.
We just feel so enriched by this, Gopi. Very lovely. Thank you.
I'm glad that it is helping, Farid.
Well, not only helping, but uplifting.
It's also an opportunity just to meditate on those words. I mean, the words are so beautiful and, you know, we, we know them only in English, but still to know that that's the message, that's what's being conveyed, that's what's being shared. It's wonderful.
I love the melody to that song.
Me too, me too.
Yeah, maybe we should try to sing that RT more often. You know, I miss hearing it. The only time I hear it is in India.
It, it is being played in the, on the virtual aarti every day at the, at Baba Samadi.
Yeah, it's, it's one thing to hear it, but another to sing it.
Yeah, to sing it, yes, yes.
Sing it, well, I suppose one can sing along. Yeah, you're right. I'll have to tune into that more often.
It will be interesting to find out if we can find the tune in, you know, in musical notation. That would be wonderful.
Someone was saying that Debbie Nordin did, did this for all the artis or if not, at least for the Gujarati aarti. Probably we can reach out to her and ask, ask the notations.
Well, I have the Gujarati aarti. Does anyone here not have it and want it because I can share?
I can upload it to the, to the Google Drive. Add it to the list of song sheets, you know, study sheets.
Aarti materials.
Aarti material.
When you say it's on Google Drive, exactly where would I?
I put in the chat a link to the Google Drive. So yeah, we can, I could make it that people can add to it. If you want to add or send it, actually you did send it to me. I'll upload it from here.
And we can ask if Debbie has the notations for this one.
Yeah, I can ask. Oh yeah, go ahead. You ask.
I'll just ask her any RT. She has musical notation.
Yeah, we can add them all to the file, to the folder.
She's very generous. You know, I think she would be happy to share that.
Can we move to the next aarti in our next session that is next week or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
We're good with this one, right?
Yeah, we, we want to extend the, extend the festivities for as long as possible.
I think we, we, we have one more Hindi aarti by Madhusudan. That is a Divya Sanatana aarti, which was written, I think, in early 60s or late 50s. I'll get the dates. And that was, was sung mostly during the Guru Pasat days in front of Baba. And then we have the Marathi aarti also written by Madhusudan, which is, which was, which I think was not written during Baba's time. If I'm not wrong, I can find that out. But that is also a beautiful aarti, which is not sung at the samadhi. Because I think they sing only Bhujave, their Gujarati and Hindi, both the Hindi artis. And then of course the American and the Austrian artis.
You know, when they, they play this during Amr Ti Ti, right before they show the film. And it's my favorite, favorite time because I love that. And it's my favorite, favorite time because I love that RT. I hope you cover that one too, Gopi, I don't know if that's on your-
Sure, we we will we will do that, I'll gather the information from, probably from Pratap Ahir and uh others, and we can we can have that as well.
There is a YouTube for that RT, Marathi RT, and I had requested and someone posted it right under the YouTube video, the transliteration.
Uh huh.
So you might want to check that out.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Right, it is only the meaning that I would I would require, I I would be requiring help from from them. Yeah, I I I have the transliteration and the words for it. And I I do sing that RT, but it's just the meaning, as it's in Marathi, I will gather that in in the upcoming weeks.
Awesome.
And then finally, we have the Tilugu RT, which was written by Bhaskar Raju, you you I'm sure you all know about Balagopala Bhaskar Raju. He was there, he was in Myrtle Beach, you know, way back, I think, in early two thousands. Uh, and his son Meher Isa was living in America for for many decades, and then he's now in India. And Balagopala Bhaskar Raju is the one who wrote the Deva Di Deva RT, which has the same melody as Adi Sachetan.
Uh huh.
And and Baba called him his first lover in Andhra, uh, Bhaskar Raju. And he was a he was a stalwart in Baba's love and who wrote many, many compositions, many songs. And I think when I, when we had the first singing section, I I think I I sang, maybe in April or May this year, I was singing one of his songs, uh, that was when Baba was visiting Andhra. And it was in a place called Tadepalli Gudam, where where Bhaskar Raju was staying. Uh, his his house was not in the list of Baba's house visits. And so he he thought that Baba would not come here and he went to the place where Baba was staying. But then he heard, then he came to know that Baba had left for house visits. And then he was coming back and then Baba Baba suddenly went to his place, you know, it was a very small small place, and then, you know, everyone was surprised, and his wife was there and uh and his children were very young, his five, you know, his wife was startled and surprised, they didn't know how to welcome Baba and all that, it was very simple place, there was hardly anything to sit there and all that. So then Baba Baba said, uh, uh, where is Bhaskar Raju? Said Baba, he he went to the place where you were staying, you know, he thought he would see you there. Then he says, um, tell him that God has come to his house and and he's not there to welcome him. So then, well, and then, you know, Bhaskar Raju came running back, you know, he was, of course, he was going on a bicycle and then he comes back, um, gasping for breath and all that, and, you know, he sees Baba coming out. Then Baba says, don't worry, I will I will complete all my visits and then come back, come back to your place. Then he comes again and, you know, then Baba asks him to sing a song. Uh, then he sings a Hindi song that he, you know, he had written very recent, you know, at the time. And we we we, it is about the journey of the soul, that the soul, uh, you know, it's had left its real home and has been wandering everywhere, lost in the Maya and in the in the attractions of the world. And seeking the beloved's help to find the address of the home. You know, so that the person, the soul can come back to, uh, you know, the home, so that's the essence of of the of the song. Baba says, it has touched my heart, uh, and then Baba leaves and then he writes this song in Tilugu later. So this song I had sung last time when we we had a session. So that's the story of Bhaskar Raju, you know, he he was a great, great person.
Wonderful. I think I think Angela's putting these up on YouTube, I hope. So we can refer back to-
You hope, all you have to do is search, it's right there.
Awesome, yes, I count on you, Angela, we all do.
But I I I don't know if if the quality of of my explanation is good enough to be there on YouTube, maybe it is good to be private, you know, so that you can all refer to it, but but I'm not sure if it's good enough.
All just talking amongst ourselves, this is not for like, you know, the absolute legacy of the future of absolute Meher Babanes, you know.
Right, right.
We authorities, everyone is on our circle Zoom, you know, we're just ourselves.
Pretty much a Zoom Zoom family thing, you know, I mean, a lot of words are-
ourselves and we don't pretend that every person who's speaking is the ultimate authority on everything to do with. Well, I suppose one day, you know, Meher Baba will become that, but hopefully, hopefully not in this lifetime.
We can think of this as a sharing workshop, so.
A sharing workshop, a study, a study session.
A study session, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you so much for your time and your energy and your expertise. You definitely know way more than we do, so it's expertise on that level.
It's such worthwhile work, it's very worthwhile.
Very.
And as a celebration, when we conclude these workshops, we maybe we could have a another concert by you, Gopi?
Yes.
I'll be I'll be happy, happy to do it.
That would be sweet.
That would be lovely.
We'll let you go, I'm sure it's getting late over there, so.
No, I'm I'm happy being here and by this, as I said last time, I'm able to learn more. Because we 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 assume certain things and because we are, we used to singing these from, you know, so many decades. But as we do more work, you know, we get to learn more about every word and so that is that is very helpful to me as well.
Wonderful.
Beautiful, beautiful, mutual study then.
All right then, Avatar.
All right, Meher Baba ki jai.
Meher Baba, thank you so much.